Assalamualaikum and welcome back again, hopefully you can hear me. So let's continue. Here we go. Come on.
Is this the one that we think it was Iqta Raba family last, last time?
Yes.
Then it's not Iqta Raba then?
No, it is Iqta Raba.
So what are we trying to do here?
We're trying to start and trying to find the musta for it.
Alright.
It's not K.
Is Hannah disappeared?
Yeah, sorry, sorry. I guess going from my phone, so this is what we looking for. See, this is the musta.
Hannah, can you please explain, explain us like just for a reminder that which when we should add like Hamza when, when we do have to add the Hamza?
Yeah, see in family four, Aslama, Jahada, Taalama, Tasaala, Iqta Raba, Yunghalaaba, Ishtafara. The last letter replaced by Hamza. See? And then Tamarbuta is added in Anlama family, which is not we are doing here. Bujah comes back. Tafaala and Tafaala.
Except three families. Except three families, we do have to add the, except three families, we do have to, we do have to add the Hamza to like all the families, except three families.
No, it's four, I think. Because Tazaki and Tamari and Taskiatan.
No, see here, Ya, Ya is K and Tamarbuta.
Hmm, Sister Harwat, she look at the family tree also.
Oh yes, it could be, okay, okay, it's legal.
We have two question in.
Okay, fine.
So we have to replace the last root letter with Hamza, which mean in, in Dilaan, in Dilaan, so we are correct. In Dilaan.
And because it was just to make pronunciation better, right? Because it looks
Yeah.
Because it's the R1 and un, un makes more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds more smooth.
Yeah.
So and now we can, we should check the Amr, the Amr pulling. Yeah.
So, so why do you replace the last letter with Hamza, you just set the rule instead of wow, yeah?
Yeah. This is what the, what the Arabs say.
Sister Hannah, can you copy paste? If is it possible, like can you copy paste this particular portion along with these notes?
Yes, good idea.
I, yeah, it's really Yeah, yeah, this thing, this thing.
In our notes.
Yeah, it's nowhere in my mind.
We'll do. So Naqis in Isunfa, what is it? Amr, oh, day forty-four. Day forty-four. Mubarek Manso, Mubarek Majizung. Normal Amar. Naqis in Amar. Ihdi, but this is from small family Ihdiya, Haddayahdi. Amar Sadkabir, small family. Wow. And would be five, let's check. Oh, we do what it said, a reader, oh no. Now, K Isunfa Il. Isn't we, we look for musta. Amar and Nahiel. Yeah, Amar. Forty-seven then, try. Passive line. Now, K Isunfa Il. Amar, so still from small family. Small family. Oh. We have problem here, there is no example from big family. Okay. What we have here is the Amr. The Amr should be in the, why? Inta hi. Inta hi. In. Inta. Yeah. Inta hi. It should be
Ida hi.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, because this one should be Yada hiya. Oh. Remember here? Idaa Yadaa hi.
Yes.
Idaa, I should change here. Idaa. Yada hi. So how you get the Amr?
You remove the ya and make it my.
Sorry. And make it light, how do we?
Just remove the.
Uh huh. And you know, the dal, the shadda from.
Yeah, we cannot read it. I didn't help any.
Yeah. Done, yeah. Why, why we have to put E again?
Because.
In, in small family.
Can you read, can you start the, any like, can you read the shadda from? Like, did you see anything, like starting with the shadda and it is readable? You don't have to have anything before the shadda, any letter?
Hmm.
That is why.
You need shadda, you need like if you don't add the helper ali like this, you will miss the sound of the shadda.
Yeah.
That's why you put the root like the ali helper, helper ali.
Yes.
To maintain the sound of the shadda, right?
Yeah, you cannot even read it, like it doesn't make any sense, like how can you start with the shadda?
Yeah, how can you start? Hmm, and also Yada hi. Yada hi, right? This is the original form.
Yeah, even you know started at school.
It, it dying, so, yeah. Somehow you will need the helper ali. So yeah, that's what that's how you get. Okay. Now, Ida hi, la ta da hi. Was what coming, Muddaan, this is correct because Zaf and Ismaul are the same in big family. So really take our time this word.
Yeah, but it is, it is like getting revised first, like we actually need the revision, we are doing so many topix.
Hmm, so okay, Sister Harwat, would you like to read from the beginning?
Ah yes. Idaa Yada hi. Ah, Iddi aan, wahuwa muddain, odu hi, yud.
What do you think?
Yes. But again, E ya sound, is it acceptable? Is it acceptable? To E ya. On to here, yes. Yeah, you are right.
Yeah. What is that, what, where, where, okay?
It was, sorry, it was day forty-two now.
Yeah, from forty-two.
The chart you have made for, it's like, it's really helpful? No, but yes, yes, the chart, yeah.
Oh, I like collect from all days we have learned.
Okay, you have made your own, right?
Yeah, yeah, but this is best from what Ustad example.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Hannah, I need this chart.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need it too.
See, we are so greedy. Yes.
This year, but many students found so many mistakes, so I retreat. I want, I want do the, what is said correction because I need to re-study again. So until this time, I haven't reached this far again, that's why I have do the, I have not.
So for the test, which you start mentioned.
Oh my god, don't ask.
Oh, it's horrible.
One, one more thing, this is Mubarek, the Mubarek should be Yun, Yun Taha. Yun Taha? Taha?
Ah, ah, sorry.
Yun, yeah?
No, after this, can you just show me a screen? Like.
Show you, show you.
After, after we are done with this, the same.
Oh, the same video?
Yes, yes, after we are done with this, yeah.
Sure, I will share with you all, but.
I will take.
Alright. So I, I did very, like, you know ah this is quite a work, irregular song. It's kind of, they find so many mistakes, so I regret. Need, you know, I.
Okay, okay.
So yeah. Anyway we can continue, I will share with you, of course, what I have. In the chart here, the Mubarek Majahul Yun Taha, Yun Taha. But the thing is, the root letter is Ya. Nunha ya. Nunha ya, the root letter is nunha ya. So what we have here is wow. Should we follow that pattern or should we follow this pattern? Odu ya, yud, or odu ya, yud. What do you see?
Ah, in the chart, the word, but for the root words, the last word was Ya.
Yeah.
Then I think we should go with bow or ali because ali and bow are replaceable.
So you mean?
With the A, ali with, no, this is, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I remember Daaya Doong.
Yes.
Da ma, ya Doong.
Do on.
Yeah.
Daaya Doong, odu ya, yud.
Explain Daaya Doong, but what we have here is Daaya. Yada hi.
Yeah, I also just checked it.
Yeah, because Ustad did mention it very quickly, yeah, in the, in the video.
Hmm, yeah, but.
But he didn't explain.
Daaya Doong is, we, we did often. So we remember, right? Daaya Doong.
So so this Ya, this Ya is Ittaa, Ta Raba. So this vow is converted into Ya? Or there is ali makhsurah on Ya, which represent ali.
That's why I'm not really sure whether we should follow this or no, because it's beautiful.
Yes, I think.
So this is. This is ali makhsurah, right? So it is in fact ali not Ya. Ya is just helping to, like, it's just a helping, like the chair as we in Surafatia, Iyaaka, so.
No, no, that is a different thing, because it's, it's a.
No, I know, but this ali is Ya, it's ali not Ya.
Yeah, this one.
Yeah, yeah, this is ali, yeah.
Like this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
This is what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
It is the same with Ustad, it's us. And then this is what I'm thinking.
Yes.
What do you say, sister?
But, but in the Quran, like, there is discussion, like, it is showing the Ya.
Yeah.
But Ya again, yes, Ya does not make any sense. And there is dragger ali, like, and why the ali is like it's on Ain, not on Ya?
Okay, maybe because, maybe, maybe, let's see, okay, so a few letters in, in Quran, we, they are just there, but we don't read those letters. Like, I don't remember the one.
I think it's ali makhsurah, I think it's ali makhsurah.
You think there's.
It's ali, yes, it's ali, like, it does make sense.
See here, see here, like, we are not reading the Ya, we are reading Idaa, Idaa.
And the ali is that it came because of the vow, right?
Yeah.
Because vow and ali are replaceable and Ya is with, yes. Mostly. And Ustad Jawad, he has not done in this surf as well and the file, right?
Hannah, if we don't hit any other source to check this.
Wait, wait. We can check from Ustad Jawad, yeah?
No, I have checked, you can check again, the difficult surf, it is not there.
Why it's not there? Ustad Jawad, why you don't add? Tafaah what? Yaati kum fasuhqan, yaqshawna, fangshu, tamur. La juzul patan si at gauran, yaati kum. Na in, what?
This means it's not difficult.
Wow.
Can, like can we send email to Sadjavad to look at this surf?
Yeah, sure. But he won't replace, replay my email.
Really?
Yeah, maybe he already add me in his blacklist. Yeah. I have some story.
One, one of us can ask them.
Yeah. Sure, go ahead and share what the replay.
Yeah.
Yada hi. So here is the what is your choices? Idaa, yud, or Idaa, yada hi. What do you say?
I feel like we don't have any of that source, but we don't have, we are just checking the one, there is a Quran, so we should go for that one.
Hmm, so you choose the second one, yeah?
Yeah, I guess we, we do have one evidence, like from where, like from this one, we are getting this thing.
Hmm, okay, Sister Sarwad, Sister Lisa, Sister Nur Hayati?
Yes, I think then that sound reasonable.
Well, I thought, I thought we can have the two option and ask you, Jay.
Hmm, and you know, there is, you know, Brother Zishan in Jok? I think we can also ask her if someone is in that group.
Yeah. Yeah, sure, ask away in a group, in Ustad Jawad, yeah.
Leave, leave both option in there and then we can ask to confirm which one and, and the reason why they choosing one or the other.
Yeah.
Who's, who's going to ask then, Sister, who's going to ask this? Can you ask it, Sister Lisa?
If you got the same question, more, like more than once, maybe you will consider.
Yeah, if nobody else asking, I can ask.
Yeah, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, leave, leave this one on the screen then.
Sister Lo, what do you say?
I have no idea. If I listen to Iqta Raba Yaktaribu, it would be Idaa, yud, now.
Yeah. My opinion is that the first one, because I follow Ustad what Ustad taught us, right? But yeah, because application can be wrong, that's what Ustad said. So far, when we have wow as
And, okay.
This is, will be this way. But yeah, leave two choices and we can ask.
And it may be like that, there is two ways of return, like it, it's the, like it, this ali, but the first one might be replaced with ali makhsurah, because
We are only confused about the Mudari, right? Mudari, like Mudari, no, no, Mudari is right, okay.
But Mudari, yes, there is, we should get the wow and ya.
Hmm, yeah, alright. So we can leave that here.
Yeah.
And we should move on, the rest are, we are okay with the rest, yeah? Odu ya, yud, or yud.
Okay, see, here in Ismafool, why we have taken Mudaa, Mudaa and with the Ya? Why not with the wow?
Yeah, it should with the wow.
Yeah, it should be with the wow, right? Then why it is with the Ya?
Oh no, this is how, how you read it, like, for the what it said, Ismaul always.
Yeah.
This is the pattern, you can say this is the pattern.
Okay, that's what he, he, here, Ismafool is not here, like, yeah, it's not, not the Mudari, not here, or the Iqta Raba family.
Mubarek, this, yeah, Nahih.
Yeah, the Mudari. We are talking about the map, map, or just the Mudari.
Mudari, Mudari and Mudari.
Okay, both. Okay, so the root letters here are, why, why they are taking the Ya here? Why not the wow?
Because the root letter is Ya here.
Okay, so okay, so that is why you're saying that we should take the wow, because the root letter is wow there. Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Daaya Doong. From, from that, this is their thing, should, should happen, but yeah, yeah, it's okay. Ah. Someone will answer for us, Insha Allah. So anyway ah Dauna, Isma, Il, Mubarek, yeah? Il, Mubarek. Okay, the Hua is Ya, Daun, or Ya Daan? Ya Daun. Aw, Ya Daan. Sorry, Yada hi. Okay, both option, you should put Uma. Okay, here we go again.
She doesn't need to be difficult.
Ya Daan Wani, or Ya Daani? Daaya Doong. Uma, Uma, oh, the wow come back, the wow comes back. Da Daun Wani, yeah? The wow.
Yeah.
But this is from small family, but we can take it, because, yes, the same root letter. The wow comes back. Ya Daan Wani? Who? What do you think?
Ya Dauna.
Ya, Ya Dauna, because Ya Da ah, what? Ten minutes again, Ya, Ya.
Ya Da Awuna is sounds funny, ya Da Awuna. Ya Da Awuna.
Yeah, we follow the Hua version only. Yeah, we follow the huwa version, only replace the ya with the. Ya da, ta daan. Or.
Ya da i.
Ya da i, we don't know yet. Uma, replace ya with the star again.
Sa da. Agan.
Hmm. Una, come back to the ya again. Ya da.
Da dauna.
Oh, alright. Uh, hunna.
Ya da.
Dauna. Hunna ya dauna.
Ya dauna.
What, ya dauna?
Dauna.
Hum, can you find home for me?
Yeah, home is here in a down, 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 the, the.
Yeah, the one, for the same, the same.
Yeah, how can it be the same?
Okay.
I remember, there are, uh, for this difficult one, there are one or two that they are the same, yeah.
Hmm.
But it used to be ya and then, and you.
Yeah, in Surah Yusuf.
Ah, yes, Surah Yusuf, uh.
Hmm, mimaya daun.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
So. Anta. The same again. Ta daan. Tau. Ta daan. Right? Uma, ta da awani. Why Luma, Antuma. And then. Antum, ta dauna. Ante. What do you say? What do you think?
Ta da ina.
Yes, ta da ina. Antuma.
Ta da awani.
Awani. Antuma.
Again, ta dauna.
Hmm, daun. Let's check. And.
Yes, yes, it's Antuna, ta dauna, yeah, last, uh, second, second row. Third, third one, yes, up, uh.
Dauna, okay, the same again, yeah?
Yeah.
Anna.
Adau.
And daun. Na, na. One. Na, na.
Adau.
Na, na. Okay.
Okay, so we, we'll, we'll ask this as well, yeah, to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you sharing in the group as well, Sister Lisa?
Yeah, yeah, I'm.
Okay, okay.
WhatsApp, yeah.
Okay.
So to remind me.
Yeah.
To ask.
Okay, this is. Yeah. Hey. I think we finish with the vocabulary, I will just copy paste for the word filler. And Kana, do you wanna do, Kana?
For four minutes, we have only five minutes around.
Alright, alright, we should do Kana. We should do Kana, yeah. What is that? Okay, Kana, remember kau, wow, and nun. Uh, pronasara, meaning to be. Kana yakuno, Sister Nur Hayati, are you there?
Yes.
Yes, let's do shal shalir, Kana.
Kana yakuno, uh, what's the master? Kaunan?
Yeah.
Kana yakuno kaunan, pahuwa.
Ta, kola yakulu.
Kola yakulu, pahuwa. Ko, ko ilun, ka. Ka, ka in.
Ka inum.
Ka inum?
Yeah. Ka inum. Uh, I think this is lazim, yeah, sister?
Yes, I think so.
Lazim, yeah? Am, am ruminho.
Am ruminho, kun?
Yeah, kun, paya kun.
Wana hi anhul lata kun. Wazurfuminho. How do you do it?
Ya makulun, makilun, wa makalaun.
Ma, ma ku.
Sorry, makulun, makalun.
Oh, makanun, makinun, wa makinatun.
Makanun. Makinun, wa makanatun, wa makalaun.
Kan, wa makanatun.
Please read again.
Kana yakuno kaunan, pahuwa ka inun. Al amruminho kun, wana hi anhul lata kun, wazurfuminho, makanun, wa makinun, wa makanatun.
Yes. Uh.
And why is the? Not lazim, why is it lazim?
Because by the meaning, can you have the passive version of to be?
To be, because you can say to be someone, to be something. And the passive, oh, I see the passive, yeah, you can.
Yeah, you can, right?
To be, yeah, okay, because you can add, you can add to be something or to be someone, but the passive you can't know.
Yeah. So. I should add here, lazim, what form do you use in this ayah? Lazim, alright, we can check the ayah. Uh, kunto, so the Antum version is the. Kunto. Yeah, you can use all the time, less than one, than one minute. Inma di, okay, sister.
Uh, okay. Wa kana, kana, humakana. Humkanu.
Okay, kana, hmm. Humkanu.
Kano, hiakana.
Hmm.
Humakanata. Una.